Will you wait just a second?
Just wait a second.
Can I make a poll back there?
Matt is? No. Matt's not in the parking lot, is he?
No, the chief.
Oh. Well, how's everybody doing tonight?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, yeah.
I know.
Come on, Herman? Getting into my baseball game.
Somebody want to text him? Did he leave his phone here?
There's a football game I need to get to.
Oh, my gosh.
Too bad.
He's probably checking his score.
That was disappointing. Am I have to go in there and rescue? Because I just saw you walk by. Do we have anybody from the EAM here tonight? No, okay, then, well, first of all, I'll call the meeting to order. And secondly, Matt, would you mind doing the invocation tonight? And then we'll do the pledge.
Heavenly Father, we ask your blessing today on our meeting and watch over us tonight and guide us to make the best decisions that we can for the betterment of our city. We also thank you for allowing us to gather like this in this free country and realizing those blessings that you bestowed upon us. We ask you to watch over all the residents of our city and of the world, especially our first responders here locally and serving in our military domestically and overseas as well. We ask that you keep everybody safe and watch over them. And especially after this holiday season, we thank you. In your name we pray.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Donna. Let the roll call show that Mr. Powell is absent tonight. Everyone else is present.
I move that we excuse Mr. Powell. Second?
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Mr. Powell. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Please let the record show. Thank you, Gloria.
So mad.
Somebody want to do the minutes since Mr. Powell normally doesn't?
Mayor McFarland, I move that we accept the city council regular minutes dated December 17th, 2018, and also city council special meeting December 17th, special meeting December 20th, the healthcare benefits and trust board of trustees minutes dated November 16th, and finally, the board of appeals November 14th as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Next is D1, claims against the city.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of the claims against the city for December 12th through January 1st, 2019 as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Claims are approved. Meeting agenda approval. Any changes, Mr. Rains? And I have none. Does anybody else have any? Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
So moved. Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved. We have no special presentations tonight. Next item on the agenda is the G items. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda.
Mayor McFarland, I move for the adoption of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember McCourtson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McBride?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Okay, so the consent agenda items have been approved. We'll move to public comments, which is item H on our agenda tonight. So I'm going to open the floor to anyone who would like to approach the lectern here and give you three minutes. Please state your name and your address. And if anyone does come forward, the item's not on the agenda, we won't be able to discuss it, but we will give direction. Anyone? Okay, seeing no one, then I'm going to close the floor and we'll move to item K, K1, considering an ordinance number 3117.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's been a long process, but we're finally here to discuss the actual adoption of our development impact fees, and I'm sure this is a topic that you're probably a little sick of hearing about. So it's been almost two years since we started this process. In April 17, 2017, city council approved a contract with Tisher Bice to begin the development impact fee analysis for the city. And the city spent about a year or so working and developing the fees that have been presented over the last several months. And just by way, a state statute has required that we've gone through this long and arduous process, through this long approval process. And so just a quick reminder of that, this all began back on June 5th, when the public had their first chance to review this topic. And then on September 17th, council acted and approved the land use assumptions and infrastructure improvement plan, which then set forth the path to begin to approve the development, which began on October 29th. And so tonight, what we're bringing forth is an actual action on the proposed fees. And just a quick review, these are the same numbers that have been viewed over the last several months. Nothing has changed up to this point. But as you can see, overall, on the residential side of things, we see a pretty significant decrease on all of the different categories. And then, and wastewater, on zone A, we see a very marginal decrease, and zone B, we see a marginal increase as well. And on the non-residential side, again, we also see pretty sizable decreases across the This is the non-residential development impact fees for zone A and zone B, just a different breakdown of the different meter sizes. And here's the map showing the different zones, zone A and zone B. And I think last time there was a, the labels were swapped on, and the figures were swapped, and so we've made those corrections to accurately depict the changes to the residential, to the wastewater fees. So at this point, open up to any questions and the staff recommendation that the mayor and city council approve the development impact fee report and fee schedule.
I just want to say thank you.
Yep.
It's about time.
Long process.
Been a long time.
Matt?
I just want to reiterate, the only reason these are not taking effect immediately is because of state law, or else we would have had these decreased a long time ago. So, May 1st, finally.
That's great. Councilmember Herman, we have our own 30-day cure period, and there's also a 75-day cure period. And so May 1st is the magical date where we'll see these fees.
Bob? Make a comment. I want to thank all the departments. I've been through this process before, and it is labor intensive to come up with a dollar figure on how much these impact fees should be. And I think it's important to let the public know that, to a large extent, they are what they are, whether they're up or down, or good or bad. They have to be justified one way or the other. So, me personally, I'm glad that the overall rate is going down, because I think the city has received some criticism in the way of residential development, that if the impact fees were lower, that we might see an uptick in that. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but nonetheless, I want to thank the department heads for going through this process, and I'm glad to see they're down. Thank you.
Mary?
Just on that same note is also, it's not just the residential, some of our local business owners, again, I'm glad to see that these are going down, because over the last few years, I get a lot of comments of someone that wants to do something, not a large project as some of these developments are, but they're local people that have been here for a long time, and then by the time they take a look at the impact fees and that, it's just not feasible. So hopefully, the word's going to get out that this has now changed, that it's going to be easier for them to do their project and to be able to finance it that way.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to, oh, ordinance number, please, sorry.
Ordinance number 3117. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting development impact fees for the city of Casa Grande to be effective May 1st, 2019.
Mayor McFarland, I move for the adoption of ordinance number 3117 as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Quartzon?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McBride?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, item K2, consider resolution number 5153. Mr. Tice?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this agenda item relates to a variance from a subdivision design standard. So most variances under the city code are considered either by the board of adjustment or, in some limited cases, planning commission, but the city code does specify that city council is the appropriate body to consider variances from our subdivision design standards. This particular variance is associated with the Mirabella preliminary plat that the planning commission recently considered. And although the planning commission approved that preliminary plat, their approval was subject to approval of this variance by city council. So with that overview, I'm going to ask James Gangliardi, the planner in our office, who worked on this project, to give you some additional details.
Thank you, Paul, and good evening, members of council. As Mr. Tice was explaining, this pertains to a subdivision variance to the Mirabella preliminary plat that was approved by planning commission in December. It's a 274-lot, single-family preliminary plat. This just gives you an overview of the preliminary plat that was proposed. And the specific variance request pertains to two blocks that are highlighted in yellow in the bottom corner. They exceed the code-required block length. Here's a closer view of the two blocks that exceed the 660-foot required block length, the Royal Drive, which is 792 feet, and Madison Drive, which is 932 feet. The city code does allow a variance to be considered by city council so long as certain criteria are met. And if this were to be approved by council, then what you would see in the near future would be the final plat for Mirabella. As I mentioned, in order to consider a variance, there's five review criteria that council must consider. I did discuss the review criteria in the request for council action, as well as the applicant providing a narrative explaining the reason for the variance. But essentially, what's really driving the variance and why staff is recommending approval of it, and why planning commission felt comfortable to forward a recommendation for council to approve, is this is really driven by the fact that Henness Road, a major arterial road, had shifted from when this project was originally conceived back in 2005. As you see on this graphic to the left, there was a preliminary plat that was approved by planning commission in 2005, but the design was a little bit flawed in that Henness Road departed the subdivision and then re-entered the subdivision, as you see highlighted in yellow. At staff's request, we asked for the Henness alignment to be shifted to the west so that all of the road could be maintained in that subdivision. It's really a great advantage, because that way, the whole major arterial road would be insured development all at one time, essentially, as opposed to having a chunk of it be out of the subdivision and then subject to that out parcels owner's development timeline. But as you see, because the road shifted to the west, it elongated the two streets that are highlighted in blue, so it caused them to exceed their 660-foot maximum block This slide points out that despite the long block lengths, there's still adequate circulation provided. That would be one of the primary concerns with the longer block length. But not only is there determined to be adequate pedestrian circulation by there being a sidewalk to both the east and west side of the blocks, but there's still adequate ways to get to Tucker Road, which is a collector road to the east, and Henness Road to the west, regardless of the long block lengths provided. Should the variance be denied, what the applicant would have to do is propose a intervening street in the middle of that block, as shown on this graphic. Staff really doesn't feel that that would be necessary, because it would be basically providing a street to two local roads that already have adequate access otherwise. And then ultimately, since this is a public street, it would be, in the long term, maintained by the city. So it eliminates the need for one more roadway that would have to ultimately be maintained by public works. So with that, planning commission forwarded a recommendation that city council approve this variance request to allow block lengths longer than typically required. And also, the applicant is in attendance to speak to this if you are to have any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
Just quickly, so I see that the maximum is 660 feet. Do we have any situation where it is extended, even though I know that's the maximum distance allowed, but is there anywhere else in the city?
I would imagine there are some examples where council has approved subdivision variance for a similar type request, but I can't think of any that come to mind.
Examples, okay. I was just curious.
Bob?
Do you know the reason that we select this as our upper limit to begin with?
I don't. I think some of it has to do with adequate access for fire. Should there be an incident on, like, say, middle of the block where fire needs to access from one direction as opposed to another? This was reviewed by fire, and they didn't find a conflict with the extra-long block lengths.
One of my concerns is the longer block, it's uninterrupted traffic, and that tends to cause vehicle speeds to escalate.
Right.
I don't know if, and looking at this, we've got sidewalks on both ends. If speed becomes an issue on these residential streets, I don't know what we do to mitigate that. You know, normally, you can install a three- or four-way stop sign to break it up. So I do have that concern. I'm not sure if you have an answer for that.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Huddleston, you're absolutely right to point out that one of the other reasons is to eliminate that speedway effect that can often result from extra-long blocks. There are probably some measures after the fact that could be implemented, such as narrowing the street by bringing in the actual drive aisle a little bit narrow through certain parts. I don't know if that would actually be the result of this, should that happen to be the case here, but when we looked at it, we felt that because of the slight curve in the road as you go to the west towards Henness, that would potentially slow some traffic. And then plus, before you get to Tucker Road, there is an intersecting street, north-south street there.
Okay. Oh, there is?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I see sidewalk there, but that is a street.
Right.
Okay.
That is still a good point.
So to the east of the sidewalk, there'd be a north-south roadway. Can't see exactly what the name of that street is, but it ends, you can see if you follow it up, it ends in a cul-de-sac. And then on the northern east-west street, there, it rounds at the west before Henness, there's a corner there with another north-south road.
Yeah, I don't think the northern road is going to be that big of a problem, but I am concerned of the lower road, the southern road, because it appears there's a high potential for cut-through traffic from Henness to Tucker, and that long stretch, I can see being a speeding problem, but...
Is Tucker like a major road that is used or has the future potential to be a well-traveled road?
I think Henness will be the main one.
Well, Henness, but if it backs up, if Tucker is not, I'd feel better about it.
All right. Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Quartzon, Tucker is designed to be a major collector. Now, at the time, it really ultimately will rely on future development to the north before you'll see it to be heavily traveled. One of the things that I also want to point out is that the developer has proposed significant landscape entries where local streets meet up with both collectors and arterials. So this graphic doesn't quite capture that, but as you're approaching Tucker Road, there would be a landscape feature where you're not stumbling immediately upon single-family dwellings. Same situation with Henness Road. Before you actually get to the dwellings, there's open space tracks. And so that could help in the way of potentially slowing down traffic, because you're still trying to orient yourself into the neighborhood with the entry features.
Taking a look at this here, on the same theme, is that to the south, what is the next major east-west?
Let's see.
See, okay, here we go.
So...
We have Tucker, there's Henness.
Major east-west.
McCartney. And I guess what I'm getting at is...
The next major east-west would be rodeo.
Okay.
Which isn't part of the subdivision.
All right, and because my, you know, there's just that temptation to try and do a faster route, like Councilmember Huddleston was saying, to try and get past and go faster there to avoid it, but looking at this, I don't see that that would be as much of a problem. Yeah. No, not, seeing it this way, no.
And technically, and of course, I don't have another graphic to show the long-term alignment for Henness, but even though one would look at that as predominantly a north-to-south road, it is running at an angle there. So I think people's habits would be predominantly to stay on Henness, because it is designed to be a major arterial, and it is carrying traffic to the southeast at that point.
Hertz over here, so Hertz is going to be a major north-south, because it's straight.
Make one last comment? Sure.
I think my preference is to have them put a road through there. I think this 660-foot limit was chosen for a reason, and I think this is exactly it. I think we're going to create ourselves a problem with cut-through traffic and speeds on that southernmost crossover. That's just my opinion.
Well, I think that's why I wanted to know if we had any other roads, you know, like Sunset. Think of Sunset. That road seems to be pretty long, and it's kind of a cut-through, and so that's why I was just curious if there's other roads that are, you know, exceed that limit, and if we have that problem.
Yes.
Sunset's one of those problems? So that's not a good example, then, right?
Yeah, I understand where you're coming from, Bob, but like, especially the curve at the end, the west end here, I think that's really going to deter people, because it's not a straight-through route. You know, if it was a square grid, I would have a little more concern, but I'm not too concerned. And if there is a, you know, if there is a problem, I'm sure that we could come up with some mitigation factors. You know, you drive to different places that have speed humps and lines on the roads and, you know, stuff like that, so. And planning is, they thought it was okay, too.
I just think there's a temptation. I know that I've got a rather long block, and even myself, I have to remind myself, it's just that got that straightaway, and there is that temptation, and I'm afraid that this would create, and this would be even more than what I have.
Every community's got them.
Right. That's true.
James, I have a question on this, based on what Bob had asked, and I don't recall seeing this concern that came up in the planning and zoning. Was there just, you know, fire was brought into this and that, but was there anything in relation to speed that was discussed that you recall at the planning and zoning?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember McBride, there wasn't much in the way of discussion. The staff report that went to planning commission did talk about the speedway effect that could result from longer streets, but just as a matter of discussion, just this evening, it was the same points about the curve in the road and the entryway features would be...
Yeah, and I think it's important that we also remember that because we asked for the alignment, Henness alignment, to be changed, it created this issue.
Right.
Which was not created by the...
There is a design solution that I think is fairly simple that would address Councilmember Huddleston's concern about the cut-through traffic going between Tucker and Henness. And I'm going to throw it out, and then I think we need to have the applicant say what, because this is the applicant's engineer, actually, so he'll be able to, he'll be able to say if it's a problem or not. But we're just going to go back to this one graphic very quickly for us. Actually, the one with, yes, it's a Royal on the top, Madison on the bottom. So the top street is Royal, the bottom one is Madison. So if we're the arrow from Madison that connects to Tucker, if you put a lot there instead of an access to Tucker there, and you extended Madison to Tucker instead, the top road, then you wouldn't have a straight cut-through from Tucker to Henness any longer. The block length would be essentially the same, but you wouldn't have that cut-through in the bottom street. So I think that would take care of...
Say that again?
Put it through the top one instead of the bottom one.
Exactly. You just have a Royal, the top street connect to Tucker, not the bottom street, okay? That way, you would not, you no longer have the cut-through from Tucker to Henness, the collector to the arterial cut-through, but you wouldn't be, the block length would be essentially the same.
Yeah.
But that may have unintended, you know, implications for the utility design or some other reasons that I'm not seeing here. But I suspect the applicant's engineer could say if that was a feasible solution or not right away, if you're interested in hearing that.
Yeah?
Sure.
That?
I'm putting you on the spot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Chris Morgan with United Engineering Group at 3205 West Ray Road Chandler. Mr. Tice's suggestion is a good one, but if I may, can I address some of the other questions that were raised before we get to changes to the map? One of the first ones I'd like to point out is the 660-foot block length... One of the first ones I'd like to point out is the 660-foot block length, if you measure from the intersection of Joaquin to the start of the curve, talking about the southern street, because it seems like the concern is all related to that, it's 546 feet between those two points. It's the extension further east to Tucker, and then the curve as it comes down to Henness. So the straight section's still 100 feet short of the ordinance of 660 feet. One of the other things we discussed during the processing was what likely was Tucker going to be in the future. As you take Tucker north, and Jim, if you wouldn't mind putting that exhibit you had that showed kind of the larger area, even that exhibit shows at some point, if Tucker's gonna have an intersection at McCartney, what's not shown on that exhibit is the freeway. It's very close, and even at McCartney, you have spacing issues, and we talked to Transportation about that, that they were unclear of in the future, depending on what the commercial, industrial uses of this area may end up being, it was very unclear whether Tucker would even connect up to McCartney. We assumed it would based on its classification, but we didn't know. So we, we opted for more circulation, just in general was better, so if we've got a collector along our eastern edge, we should, we should have at least two points of connection.
It's also dependent on state land, land trust selling that property.
Very true. Good point.
That's state land, state trust land.
One other thing, a lot of the layout in this southeast corner, Jim was exactly right, a lot of it was driven by Henness, but some of it is just the shape of the property in the corner. On that northern edge, we've got a little cutout, and then it's just a, it's a long, wide piece. So in our experience laying out projects, in many cases, too many curves can be just as dangerous as a long, straight stretch, so we tried to mitigate by not putting as many houses along it as well. One of the things in the narrative for the variance request was that if you took just a normal ice cube tray layout, 660-foot street, you can get 24 houses on that. Our longest street has 24 houses on it. What fills up the difference is the open space in the curve, and then the, the open area we've left right at the entrance with Tucker. Now, back to Paul's suggestion, I think we can make that work, because if I remember correctly, one of our fire stipulations was we had to connect northerly on Tucker, so that gives us our second point north, and it loops through, so we would, we would still have our two points. I think we would have to confirm that with fire, because taking one full point off, that becomes kind of a long loop around for cars to go both directions. But I, I don't, at, at first reaction, I don't see an issue with it. As far as what you brought up about utilities, drainage, the layout through there, I think we can make all that work. And since I'm up here, if there's any other questions, I'd like to answer them.
Would that mitigate your concern?
It would. I, I like what Paul suggested. I guess my only question is...
Where do we go from here?
Yeah, do we...
Well, can we approve this pending that change?
Yeah, ultimately, you always have the option of granting the variance subject to certain conditions, and one of those conditions would be, you know, the modification. I'd rely on, on the engineer and, and Mr. Tice to, you know, to actually get the language correct.
Okay.
Matt?
I did have a question for the engineer. Kind of, would this be a huge cost to the applicant to redraw that? And I realize they'd be getting an extra lot, so that's an extra home sale, but if, if it's gonna cost...
He loses.
Well, I don't think, I think...
Losing the lot, yeah.
It's the same.
Yeah, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we make any changes to the lot count, we'd be back to planning commission. But if all we were doing was making a change to the road, that could either be done by condition to be addressed when we come forward with improvement plans, or we could make the change now.
I realize this is asking you, the engineer who gets paid for drawing these lines.
Sure.
But would it be a huge cost for them to redo that, do you think?
If it was just making the change on the pre-plat, I don't think it's that big of a deal. My concern would be, we've had a lot of other exhibits, PAD, everything else that would then be out of conformance that...
I think actually just the preliminary plat would have to be modified, and the way I'm looking at it, there would be no loss of a lot, because you're gonna add a lot where the other access was, so it's a wash in terms of the lot count.
Yeah.
So it's just a matter of redrafting, modifying the preliminary plat to change the one lot in the street configuration, but the PAD would be fine, no modification there.
So what do we, on the, on the east side, then, we're just moving that lot? I guess I was...
Yeah, you're just extending the northerly road, which is, which is Arroyo to Tucker. And then the bottom road, which is Madison, you're not gonna extend to Tucker.
That goes out.
That's gonna become a lot there.
I understand. I'm sorry, I missed that, but yeah, it makes sense.
That makes sense.
Because the lot count would remain essentially the same.
Right.
Oh, Paul, I think I misunderstood what you were saying. I thought you were saying...
Because I thought he said put a lot just right there.
Well, I thought you were saying just to eliminate the connection of Madison to Tucker.
No, they say move Arroyo to a connector.
No, but, but then extend...
Then Arroyo ends up 900, Arroyo ends up the same.
Because that's already, that's already a long block right there.
Yes, but we're okay with that, because it doesn't, it's not a cut-through between Tucker and Henness.
Doesn't go anywhere. Doesn't go to Henness.
See, it's not, it's not a cut-through at that point, see that, what we're saying, Chris?
Yep. We will...
In the block length...
I've got the pre-plat, we would lose two and then gain one.
Okay.
Unless I can get them...
Is that a net of one, then, or...
Yeah, so it'd be, it would be a one-lot loss, because...
Loss, right.
And here, and the reasoning why is, as you start from that, where the cul-de-sac is, that first lot just east of the cul-de-sac, we're already at minimum lot widths of 55 feet as it extends down. Lot 65 there would actually extends a couple feet into the right-of-way, so if we push that right-of-way straight through, and especially with the enhanced right-of-way, we can't, we can't squeeze. We enhance the right-of-way at the intersection of Brent and Tucker and at Madison and Tucker, because we had lots fronting it, it was easier to do, because there's, there's plenty of room in the, the front yard setback to have detached sidewalk. In the side yard with the need for PUE and everything else, I don't think we can do that.
Because that's my, yeah, my concern, you're gonna lose a lot, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think we would, we would lose two and then gain one back, so a net one-lot loss.
So it would be costly.
Well, and I, and I don't know if the entire council shares my concern. It may be best to proceed with it.
I'm not, I'm not concerned.
So let's just go back to the road for a second, take a little while it's up here on the screen. And that, I'm, honestly, it doesn't seem like it's that big a piece that would be, yeah, but would you be losing lots there also?
With the, the alternative...
That little cutoff bit, yeah.
Yes, that would, that would take two lots out of the...
Okay, all right, okay.
I also, just from a practical matter, if the concern is going from Henness to Tucker unimpeded, a new intersection somewhere in between's not going to...
Okay.
Unless it was, unless, unless stop control was added to that intersection...
Right.
I don't think that slows down eastbound traffic.
No.
Okay.
It just adds another conflict movement of, of intersection.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't see a problem with what...
If there is a problem, there's stuff we can mitigate at a later date, too.
Yeah, there's other stuff.
I mean, I appreciate trying to stop it now, but... Mayor, I'd like to call the question.
Okay. Can I get an ordinance number, then? Or a resolution, I'm sorry. Resolution, please.
Resolution number 5153. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving the request from RMG Maribella LLP for a variance from the block length provision of section 16.16.160 for the Maribella subdivision.
Mayor McBride, I'd like to move approval of Resolution Number 5153 as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Just a question, what does the vote need to be to make sure, to make this pass? Since we're missing Mr. Powell, is there any...
No, this, unlike some variances, and I'm pulling up, this is simply a, a resolution, and this variance doesn't have a supermajority requirement.
Okay.
So all, all of our resolutions need to have a majority of, of those present.
Okay. All right, then, can I get a roll call vote for item 5153, Resolution 5153, please?
Councilmember Huddleston?
No.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Quartzon?
I'm just gonna have to say, this is gonna be one of those things I would regret if I voted yes, so I'm voting no.
Mayor Protem McBride?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Okay. Item K2 is approved. We have no executive session, and reports tonight, since I know you guys haven't, there shouldn't be a lot of reports, but just, first thing we wanted to announce is that we did the groundbreaking for the Carmack Knapp Park today.
There we go.
And to kick off the $8.6 million park improvement. So it was a lot of, a lot of, it was fun, and it was good to see the project get going. Lot of good improvements on, at the park. It'll take, it'll be closed unfortunately until fall, so I want to make sure everybody understands that it will be closed.
Except the swimming pool.
Except for the swimming pool and the baseball field. So that means that the, that all the walking path and, and the park in general will be, will be closed and fenced off, so. But it's a, it's a great, it's a great park, great addition, great upgrade.
And the timing's great, because it's all being paid with impact fees.
Right.
And so we've not overloaded, yep. That's...
Reports. Yeah, okay, reports.
Okay.
We can take this off now.
Yeah, you can take it off. Lisa, do you have anything?
We should work on those.
Well, just to, to kind of piggyback on that, you know, and again, I think this is where we have to remember, what's nice about the city of Casa Grande is all the different parks and recreation throughout our city. You know, we have, you know, Lencola, we have the Ed Hooper Park, which I'm becoming a regular at the dog park these days, so whoever's handling that dog park, I'm, I'm becoming a regular there. And, you know, I mean, so there's so many other areas and parks where, where people can, can go and get outside, especially with all the New Year's resolutions, right? And then, so, and as far as activities, yes, with the holiday, I did go to the chamber dinner with, with many of my fellow council members, and, you know, it was just great. Every year, you know, they honor people that are just great in the community, and this year Evelyn Kasuga, Rhonda Curphy, me and Migo Ricardos was the business, and of course, Central Arizona College, but, you know, all four of them were deserved, well-deserving, and it was just, it was nice to honor all of them. And then we approved the final lease for the United Way. The resource center's gonna be opening up hopefully February 1st. Next weekend, we have a cleanup of the pier center, so we're gonna kind of clean up around and paint inside and try to get things going, so we have volunteers if anyone wants to join us next weekend. We have, we're cleaning up Friday and Saturday and painting Monday, I believe it is. So if anyone would like to help us, go onto the Just Serve website, and you can see the different things that are needed to help with getting that thing going.
What's the date on that again?
It's next weekend, Martin Luther King Weekend. So, yeah.
On Saturday.
Jamie, is it Friday and Saturday? It's next, the night, yeah, the weekend, next week, not this weekend, the following weekend.
Both.
Yes. So Saturday, I believe, is the cleanup, and Monday's painting, correct? Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know.
The 19th of the 21st.
Are those the dates? Thank you. They're clearing that up.
Another week later. The 19th, not the 21st.
Can you send the council out something, Larry? Please?
So, yeah, that's it for me.
Matt?
Uh, thank you. There was a, I don't know if how many of you saw him, but there was, there's two videos that came out this week on the internet. Kind of a tale of two cities to kind of piggyback off of the newspaper's editorial, which was pretty good. You know, and there's a comedian that grew up here in town, I didn't know him, he's a little younger than me, but he, he kind of made a mockery of my hometown, of our hometown, and, you know, and I understand it's humor, and he was trying to be funny, and he didn't highlight anything positive, and I was kind of disappointed, you know? It, it hurts me personally, because this is my town, and I grew up here, too, and, you know, there's a lot of good things. But then this, another gentleman in town, Jonathan Martinez, who grew up here, too, made a great positive video that was released last night, I think has over 15,000 views in two days, you know, which is amazing, and is positive about his experience growing up in Casa Grande and showing positive things in our community, much like, you know, like a city video would do, but this guy did it on his own, shared his own experience, so it's, if you haven't seen it, Jonathan Martinez made a great video, because, you know, and he even said, "Support local business, shop local, shop small, shop local, you know, buy stuff here in town." And so I'm like, man, this guy, he gets it, and I, I'm really glad to see that. And, you know, it's all about being positive, and that's what I think this year, I mean, we're working on our strategic plan, and let's focus on being positive and a positive image for our town and highlighting those positive things, kind of like, I can't say that because, but, you know, the different recreation amenities we have and everything. So I think this is a good opportunity to see how the exact same thing can be portrayed two different ways in the media, but you just have to choose which one that you want to believe, and, and I'm always gonna go for the positive one, especially when it comes to Casa Grande. And then also, another gentleman that grew up here filmed a music video at our skate park this past, I don't know if he's filmed it, because it was raining, but, but he got permission to do it and everything, but, you know, but he was looking for local people, too, so there's, you know, people that grow up here do come back here, some make fun of it, and some do a really good job, so let's, you know, let's focus on the positive this year. Garden of Sunshine over at Carmack Knapp Park is Saturday at 5:00 PM, there's a ceremony, the families have been invited, and the whole public's invited, a kind of memorial service, and the community service department, Steve, has made sure that we will have access to the Garden of Sunshine area, so thank you for that. He's been working with the youth commission during that, so, I'm sorry I missed the groundbreaking today, but it was, it was a busy day at work, so...
And that's a good thing.
Yes, that is a good thing, because people are shopping local.
Yes, they are.
So just remember, community pride.
Donna?
Well, speaking of community pride, thank you to our police department that they were part of the DUI task force on New Year's Eve. This room was filled with lots of officers, lots of food. It was a very cold, rainy night, the chief came out, Sheriff Lamb was here, and we had a lot of people, and they were out there doing a really great job when everybody else was either out doing what they weren't supposed to do or home tucked in bed, so it was really good to be part of that. And then, also just thanks to staff, I know that I brought to Larry's attention, there was an issue around the community center and the speed. I went through there several times and noticed that there was not a reduction in speed, and so they were able to get signs up to help with that, so that was done this week, so that's it.
All right. Mary?
Neon Sign Park, I've been helping with the license agreement, it looks like that that's finally getting solidified and that. Some work is starting to get on some of the landscaping there, getting really excited. They're looking at potentially March to do a, kind of a groundbreaking opening ceremony of sorts. It may not be completely done, because there's a lot of, with the memorial bricks and that, so if you're interested in doing a memorial brick, you can go online with Main Street, and you can find out about that. Also, I wanted to mention, we have Frito-Lay here in Casa Grande, we have Ross Labs, we have Hexcel, we have Hermann Dairy, Ermond Dairy, we have Tractor Supply Warehouse, we have Walmart Warehouse, we have Daisy brand. And what do people ask me about when I'm out and about? They go, "So, is Lucid gonna go? What about Phoenix Mart?" It just says to me, "We've gotta do a better job," and that's, and that's exactly what I said to them. I said, "You know what we have? We have Frito-Lay, we have Hexcel, we have all of these places that have been here, that pay good wages, they pay medical, they pay retirement," and that, and people are amazed. They're going, "Really? I didn't know that." I, just somehow, we gotta figure this out, and we have to get better at, at tooting our horn. And Happy New Year.
Bob?
Mayor, along with many of my colleagues up here, attended the Chamber of Commerce Mixer at Accopolymer, the awards dinner that the chamber puts on, the groundbreaking today, and along with what, what the others have said, lots of great people in this town, there's a lot of good things going on and a lot to be proud of, and, and I, I'm just thrilled to, to be part of it.
Doing a good job.
Excellent. Well, Happy New Year to everybody, and I know Donna and I attended a podcast, small business, kind of a power networking podcast that was put on by Moshe Klein, so a small business over in Maricopa, and it airs every Sunday at noon, and if you wanted to go listen to the podcast, you could actually go to his website, it's under Power Networking. If you Google PowerNetworking.com, you can, you can hear the podcast. If you Google PowerNetworking.com, you can, you can hear the podcast. I thought it went pretty good, and we talked about Casa Grande, we talked about our business, our local business, small business. It was really good. And then that same day, I actually did a podcast interview with Kevin Reagan, which I thought actually went pretty well, too, so if you wanted to check out that podcast, you can actually go on to the Pinellas Central website and Google that, check it out. And I think Kevin did a really good job, so you can tell him I said that, Heather. I also attended the governor's inauguration today, which was at the mall down at the Capitol. It was, it was very nice, it was the entire, his entire staff, the elected staff, was sworn in today, so they officially take, took office today, and the legislature will get sworn in next Monday. So a couple of big days for the state. And then we, again, the Carmack Knapp groundbreaking, and then I also had a meeting today with the Pinellas County mayors and our new Senator, Senator McSally. So that was an interesting meeting. We talked about water, we talked about other issues, I-10, we talked about a bunch of stuff to make sure that she was aware of what we were concerned with, and I told her we would be coming to her, asking her for money, so. So she's prepared. So I said, "You can just write your check right now for about $5 billion, and we'll get that I-10 widened."
Yeah.
Anyway, that's, that's pretty much my report, and I want to thank everybody, all the council members for all your hard work last year, and look forward to a great year in 2019. All right? And thanks, and thanks to staff, too.
Street fair.
Street fair is the night, that's the 19th and 20th, isn't it? So it's a weekend year cleanup.
Yes, it is.
Also, there's the Chamber, Chamber Home and Garden this weekend, out at the, out at City Gate, so don't forget about those. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.